Council have any other thoughts on this?
I've always thought it was a good idea. It just seems like the fiscally responsible thing to do as a council to identify a funding source. Um, for any project before we move forward with it. So, um, I don't want to see downside to this.
Sorry, was someone else talking?
Oh, sorry. I was just calling on you if you.
If I recall, the league was asked what the opinion was and they advised that. We do not, but I think they they felt that there was no harm if we did. I if I recall right, they talked about it being redundant since we are required to have a balanced budget, but. I don't think there's any harm in having this. So there wasn't really an opinion either way, other than that. Um, that's just what I recall.
Yeah, and I I think you're right on that, Brian, from what I can remember, but that was a year and a half ago almost now, I think so.
That's true.
Now, that is correct. I mean, uh, the league's opinion was they've never seen an ordinance. Uh, like this, but it certainly doesn't hurt anything again because you have state laws that require balanced budgets and other. Uh, fiscal laws from the state. So you're adding to that, not contradicting any of that. So they wouldn't have a problem with it.
Just add add more Keith on a local level.
Correct.
Balance budget piece, you know, what we're trying to avoid is, you know. Past or current councils burdening future councils with having to balance a budget with the bonding money that they really didn't figure out. Where the revenue and source was going to be, then you put your potential in a bind to actually get to that balanced budget. So it's just more of the. Of trying to avoid that situation.
That's a good point.
So like I said, we just wanted to get this in front of you guys. We'll bring more information, uh, or Blake will from what the league said about it. Uh, but I guess, is there any other discussion on this agenda item? I'm hearing none. So we will move on to new business. Um, Mike. Mike's here to present some information on law enforcement contact study report. So I'm going to kick it over to him to present that to the council.
Hey, good evening. Uh, my name is Mike Brow. I'm the criminal justice coordinator. I work for the Douglas County government, but ultimately my role is to support. The criminal justice coordinating council, which Chief Patrick is a member. And, um, some of you may have seen a presentation, um. Probably about a year and a half ago by Robert Bennecke, my predecessor. You your city, along with Udora Lawrence, the sheriff's office and. Uh, University of Kansas Public Safety had worked very hard to put together a, um, study, uh, to, uh, look at all police contacts. What type of contact they were, look at demographic information. The the ultimate purpose was to, um, look at, um. Minority contacts, but also there'd be some other, um, information that'll be useful to your police department, um, um, through this study and, um. Let's see, I'll just show just a couple of slides. So so we contacted with a Northeastern University. Who has done this, uh. Type of work quite frequently throughout the country. Um, I I will point out that, um. This is the first, uh, community that Northeastern has ever worked with for this type of work. That was not court ordered or ordered by, um, federal takeover, um, for this study. So we're the first ones that came to them and said. Will you help us understand, um, our work here? And and, uh, so that's been an interesting experience for them. But I I hope value to us. Um, so just to, so here's the goals of the study. So it's just developing a process for documenting traffic at pedestrian stops. Believe it or not, if, uh, if on a law enforcement stop. There is no action, a written warning or a ticket given, those stops typically throughout America are not recorded. Um, that not any different, uh, in Douglas County. And so now all of our law enforcement agencies are, um. Logging that contact in our, um, electronic management system. And then, uh, the and analysis of the data to determine if disproportionality exists and then to formulate solutions and help us with recommendations. So right now we're in the phase two of the study of data collection. We had hoped to be done with the collection by this point. But unfortunately, um, due to COVID, law enforcement stops have decreased significantly. Over the last year, um, and this is a slide here that shows all of Douglas County. And I'll let Chief, uh, Patrick talk about anything that he's noticed in Lawrence or in in Baldwin. But, um, you see here, the beginning of March, there were about four hundred and twenty. Uh, law enforcement contacts, um, in the county. And as the, uh, threat of COVID became very real to us, you saw a significant drop that first week. Even a continued drop the next two weeks of of, uh, March. And and then, of course, when the state home orders went into effect. This spike you see here in April was due to, uh, the city of Lawrence. Had a federal grant to the state of Kansas for a clicker or ticket campaign, a seatbelt campaign. And that's why we saw this spike here in May. Um, the numbers maintained low throughout the summer. As you can see here, this is reflective of KU coming back to campus for the Kansas University students. And the numbers began to drop off in September, and I don't have a better graph for you, but in October, the numbers dropped off even more significantly. So and why I'm coming to you today, I sent, uh, um, the city manager Glenn wrote in, uh. An email last week along with Chief Patrick that the, um, study. Needs to have a minimum number of minority contacts, another for us to reach enough data to be a valid study. And due to the reduced number of stops in our community, we haven't reached that, uh, minimum number. At this point, in fact, we're we're not close. So, um, in our contract was written to do a, uh. Two ninety day extensions to continue this, um, data collection. Um, so we are, uh, going to invoke the those two extensions that will take us until March first of, uh, twenty twenty one. The cost to the city of Baldwin to do that extension is, uh, five hundred and ninety dollars. Um, but I I do want to repair you that it's possible that we will have to ask for additional extensions. Um, that will require negotiating a new contract, which we hope to negotiate a lower rate with Northeastern to finish the study. Um, because of the fact we we've already paid for any future site visits and the final report of the study. So any subsequent months added on would just simply be for the the data collection, which is an automated process. So. Um, so I just wanted to give you, that's a real quick. Um, hit on the study and where we're at, and I didn't know if Chief Patrick wanted to add anything.
I really don't. I do want to just reiterate what Mike said, that, uh, the data study is something that we fully embraced. Uh, really wanted to participate in and want to continue that participation. And he's right, the numbers of car stops went dramatically down during COVID. Uh, mostly due to, like he said, the stay home orders that were in place, but then also my directives from my people that we. Try to protect ourselves and only make the appropriate stops that we had to make. And, uh, so we limited our contact with people, so we didn't infect our department. So he he's exactly right about all those numbers.
Okay. Mike, do you have anything further?
I don't. I'd be happy to feel any questions. Also, I will let you know that if the commission or your community. At any point, but certainly at the conclusion of the study, would like, uh, um. Professor McDivitt and Professor Emma to, uh, come and do a presentation. Um, either on Zoom or hopefully, uh, into next year that will do that live at, uh, in the in your community. Um, that is available to you as part of this study. Um, so I just want to make sure you're aware that. Anytime you need information on this, we're available to you.
I appreciate it, Mike, and I I would like completed if if we could, uh, go ahead and put us down to have a presentation to. Great.
Absolutely. We'll we'll get with Glenn and Chief Patrick to, uh, to organize that. Um, and then if you need help, uh, publicize that as well.
Uh, any council members have any questions for for Mike?
I'm just curious, you know, you you after you get the data, are you comparing it to? Other like sized cities? Are you just looking for anomalies or just patterns? Or what's the, I mean, what's the readout going to look like?
So so the, um, we will be getting compared to other cities of our size, especially college town, uh, counties. Um, because we have, uh, you you're a college town, Lawrence is a college town. Um, so I assume there'll be some comparisons to like, um, Iowa City, um, which is similar in size. Um, so we will be looking at that. We, um, we will be looking at, of course, um. Minority contacts, um, that are over representative of the population. Um, so that'll look different for Baldwin City than it will for Lawrence, um, in or for Udora. Um, it'll look different than, uh, for KU campus as well. So there'll be GIS mapping, um, to see where the. Frequency of stops are in your community. Um. And there'll also be, um, information for Chief Patrick, um, around, um, which officers make a lot of stops, which officers make a lot of DUI stops. Um, information about seizures and searches and the success rate of those, which can be very helpful in establishing policy or reviewing policy. Um, so so those are some of the the pieces. Um, Chief Patrick, am I missing anything?
No, you're not. It does give us a a great snapshot of the activity that goes on. We try to capture a lot of that with our own record management system, but the. The way in which Mike described earlier, there are lots of contacts that we have that are not captured in our. Current record management system, and this is a way that we're able to do that and on all of our stops. So we should get a. A really good representation of what our activities are.
Excellent. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you so much, Mike. I appreciate your work on this, and we look forward to hearing the final.
Thank you for your time and and your collaboration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item under new business is the fire in purchase. Uh, I'm gonna let. Uh, Terry Baker, I think he's on, so we'll let him go ahead and present and then. Then we'll follow up with the finance committee. They discuss this as well.
Um, everybody, uh, yeah, um, you have the nineteen ninety three. Engine that has had tons and tons of issues. It's outdated. Um. We're still having issues with it. Uh, biggest thing is, is his age and, uh. I we're looking at replacing it with a newer truck and, uh. That way we won't have to get another one for another fifteen to twenty years after this next one. Um, but that's where we're at with that unless anybody else, I mean, I talked to financial committee the other day about it. If anybody has any questions about the old truck or whatever, they can sure ask them.
Scott, you want to get update kind of what the finance committee talked about?
Yeah, um, so obviously, um. I think the the committee's first attempt is trying to figure out, you know, how to fit this into a budget that's already been. Published, right? And it was, it's not clear that this really was an expenditure targeted for twenty twenty one. Um, or twenty twenty for that matter. I think that's the the timeline that we're looking at here. Um, so I think the majority of the discussion was around how that possibly and where that funding could possibly come from. Uh, we had multiple, you know, different options that we talked about. Um. So from a finance committee perspective, I think it was really around how in the world do we fit this in, you know, with the with what we got currently planned to do. Um, I think there's a lot of other areas to discuss about this. As a council, but I'll just leave it at that for now and just let the other finance committee members kind of talk about. You know, maybe Ben wants to jump in or Glenn about potential funding sources for this in the current year or out here.
Now, we we can do that. I, before we get to that, um, Chief Baker, could you tell us a little bit about the process of building that truck and about how long it would take? To from the time we say, yes, we want to sign this contract, the time is delivered and what that little bit, what that's about?
Um, from the time we signed the contract, it's a little over a year to take to build, actually build the truck. It takes over a year. Um, in the past, the other truck we bought, um, from the time we got delivery of the truck, then it was another year before the first payment would be due. I don't know if it'd be done the same way, but it was, so it was a two year process from the ti- from the time we said, yes, we're going to build it. To the first payment was due was almost, it was at a little over two years for the last.
Yeah, the the reason, uh, I want everybody to hear that is because that's about the timing then. For that, um, that we've been talking about the finance committee and and with Ben, uh, our financial advisor there. So we could be looking at twenty twenty two, but by the time we really make the first payment. Or even later for for the truck. So it's typically well after you receive it. You want to be satisfied with the truck. So there's a lot of reasons why you don't, uh, make a payment very quickly on that. So. It's the end of twenty twenty right now, so we're probably looking at taking, uh, you know, an order wouldn't arrive until probably the spring of. Um, twenty twenty two, and so that payment would be either twenty two or twenty three. So, um, and from there, I know, uh, Ben's been doing some debt service analysis because we do have existing debt out there. And the whole point of this was to show you what our debt looks like and how this payment would fit under that. Debt service that we're currently doing. So, ah, there we go. Now, and see that got the shared screen there. So, uh, he walked walked you through this part of the presentation.
You guys hear me too?
Yep.
Okay, good. So, uh, the finance committee challenged us to go back and fit this in within our current structure. And of course, we said challenge accepted. Uh, so it went back, Jack, and I went back to model the debt service that you've got sitting in the bond and interest fund. And as you recall, bond and interest fund only, uh. Pertains to the general obligation debt. That's just governmental activities. It didn't include any kind of enterprise fund activities. Uh, so the blue, uh, bars are their current debt, and you can see it dramatically falls off, uh, uh, after twenty twenty seven, and that's the twenty fifteen bond. Uh, cuts in half. So what we were able to do and remember back when we passed the budget, we also had twenty twenty one leases. We had a few car, I think it was a a police car, a med unit. And, uh, uh, cameras that were going to be leased as part of our budget and it was approved. Those are the little orange bars. So with that, on the twenty twenty one, um, twenty twenty one bar, our debt service budget is just under eight hundred thousand. And and that's built into the budget right now. Uh, there. So what we went back to the drawing board and said, one is what's the best cheapest way of doing the fire truck? Right now in today's interest rate market, the easy answer to that was to include that into the bond issue that's coming up to take out the temporary notes. Remember the temporary notes that are now outstanding includes the police building and laudatorium. We'll be doing that, uh, March first. Uh, right now, our interest rate that we've got calculated in that bond issue is around one point five percent, and I think that's going to be high. Uh, so I right now we can't find a lease that's going to be low as low as that. So with the fire truck being a ten year life on a lease anyway. Our recommendation is to go ahead and put it inside or into that, uh, bond issue, fund it fully. Uh, and what you see is the gray bars includes the takeout of the temporary note and the the funding of that that, uh, fire truck. And it also, uh, keeps debt service level pretty well level at eight hundred thousand. Uh, and then with twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, you can see a fair, uh, a slight drop and levels out. The purpose here was to be able to keep the same revenue sources, uh, across the board. And not see a blip or another, you know, another need for the revenue like you had just discussed on your bond funding. So here in this case, the revenue that's designated for this bond issue would actually come from the transfers of, uh. Transfers of CIP sales tax, your quality of life and and the general fund. Those three are the major transfers along with, uh, middle levy that funds this, uh, bond interest interest fund. So. So right now we fit it in there, challenge accepted, and we, I think we've we've been able to pull that off, uh, without actually. Requiring additional revenue to fund the debt service. So, uh, any questions I I'd be happy to answer, but at this point, uh, I recommend us to move forward at the purchase of the fire truck.
And also for the council, uh, hasn't been mentioned, but in Terry can confirm, uh, but the price of the fire truck. First of this year goes up by fifty thousand.
Yeah, if 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 we don't, that was our biggest reason pushing it this year was because. It will go up another fifty thousand January one for the exact same truck. It will be another fifty thousand.
And Ben, can you tell us what the points are about the truck after that? If we included in that bond, how much does that increase our our payment?
Uh, yes, I can. Stop screen.
In the overall, I guess, also of the.
Uh, it was around seventy two thousand, if I remember correctly.
Is what it in our bond payment?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was the the debt service for for each year at around seventy two thousand.
Just that for just the truck.
Just the truck, yeah.
Yeah, which is affordable.
Okay, council questions?
No, Scott said. Oh, sorry, Corey. No, it's okay. I was just going to say, um, I'm I'm glad that, uh, that Ben was able to to get that. Fit in there nicely. Um, I guess I just have a question for Ben. I mean, Ben, is this a, is this a comfortable fit? I know when we had our, uh, meeting with the department head, uh, the fire department was also having a, uh, need to change over the radios. I believe the police as well. Coming up, and I'm I'm just afraid that, um, we we may be pinched in there a little tight, or do you feel comfortable with how we're we're sitting if another need comes up like that that's im- imminent?
That's a good question. I, uh, yeah, I I am comfortable with that. And and because there's padding. There's some padding built into not just the rate, but all the acquisitions, the truck itself. Uh, I I've built it in at six hundred thousand instead of the, or six hundred plus, uh, instead of the, uh, discounted rate. Uh, and then also built into this, and we haven't separated it out, is a piece of that temporary note is actually sewer. Uh, projects. So this has got, this has got some some, uh, uh. Margin built into it. So I believe we're actually going to come out far better than what I'm showing you, but at a worst case scenario, that's where we sit, and even that is comfortable. Uh, what I was trying to do is, uh, bring the, uh, stress, not stress, I'm bringing the transfer out of the general fund down. But to alleviate pressure off the general fund too, uh, and that that actually happens in this case, even with the fire truck going into there. So that's a good question.
Okay, good. Encouraged to hear that.
Well, I mean, that's where I was going, Corey, as well. I mean, it's really, you know, we can fit it in, right? It's just how how big a bond, you know, do you want to?
Yeah.
Yet, I mean, so fitting it in is a little bit in my mind nebulous. Realistically, we're not there yet, but you know, this has obviously been on the, on, you know. On the back burner to do at some point in the in the future, right? We just haven't figured out where it fits. It sounds like. It needs to fit now as opposed to later, but ideally, you know, we would understand that this is going to probably prohibit us from doing other things. Down the road unless we again want to increase the debt load, right? So, um, you know, the public safety, um, committee at some point. Has a prioritized list, or maybe it's just the instruct infrastructure on the strategic plan. This fits now at the top, right? And something down below may have to drop off if we want to keep the debt load where it's at. So I just want to make that subtle point that, you know, fitting it in is a kind of a a moving target.
Any other questions or discussion?
So what happens to the truck that, uh, we're going to replace? Is it able to be sold to somebody else? Or what happens to that?
Um, the truck, the truck we have now will be sold on purple wave. That's really the only place we can sell them is on purple. And, uh, that truck there, and I'll be, I'll be totally honest, because of the age of the truck, it will probably not bring more than. I would say no more than eight to nine thousand dollars if if you're lucky. Because those trucks that old, nobody wants them because they have too many issues. Somebody will buy it, but you just, I mean, it's it's, you don't know what you're going to get out of it. Um. I actually contacted a place in Texas to see if they'd buy it outright. And because the agent truck, they don't want, it's a fire truck place that buys them, and they told me that they didn't want any part of it because it was a ninety three. It was.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So a point of clarification, Casey, do we need to approve the method of funding tonight or just the? Um, approval of starting the the process?
Uh, you would approve the method of funding, Kelly, when we issued that bond payment, I believe. Correct, Ben?
That's correct. Yeah, that that's actually going to come in January, uh, along with the whole, the whole bond itself.
Okay, thank you. I'll let somebody from the public safety committee make a motion.
Top one. I mean, it's a substantial amount of money. Um, and, you know, identifying where it lies on our list of priorities is hard without having. Um, other departments finding in at the same time. Um, it's it's definitely a a need for, maybe, in some.
So for Terry, I guess, and, uh, Glenn, uh, to to save that fifty grand, is it, is it the, is it the twenty twenty calendar year or is there? Is there some?
By by the end of twenty twenty, correct. The price will increase in twenty twenty one.
Do we know, do we know, Glenn, is that, you know, just a, a sales incentive to to pull things in, or do we know that actual costs are going up and? Um, there's no way in twenty twenty one that, you know, they'll honor that same price or somebody else for that matter.
I believe it's just the cost of materials that are just going up. That's what the manufacturer's telling us. So.
And how how come, were there competitive bids or how does this, is there a single source here on this or what's the process?
Why, you want to speak to that one there, Chief Baker, and how you arrived at at this this truck, this model?
Um, we went back to Rosenbauer and got our first, you know, had them, we spec the truck. Um, which took us about six months of specking the truck to get to the point of them giving us, uh, a bid on the truck. And, uh, they came in by the time we, and this, when this truck started out, our first spec started out at six hundred and seventy five thousand. And we brought it down, start taking stuff off because, you know, we don't know what it costs when we spec it. So we did what we wanted, and then we we ended up taking down to where we're at now, under six hundred thousand. Um, but that was taking off a lot of stuff, stuff we can get by without, but since we're a smaller city. Um, but Pierce Manufacturing is one of the other tr- other companies. We called them and asked them about a truck. They started out at like seven hundred and some thousand before we even told them what the specs of the truck was. They just, our platform we bought it was nine hundred and some thousand. Pierce came with one point four million for the exact same trip. Well, not the, they're exact same truck, but built by different companies. Pierce is one of the only other manufacturer that built trucks here in the United States, and that they're always anywhere from two hundred to. Like the other one was almost five hundred thousand more. Because you're basically buying and Udora City went with Rosenbauer in their last engine too, because they're always cheaper to go through them and buy one.
Well, I can see that there's a need, uh, for the. Well, I can see that there's a need, uh, for the track. However, I have a hard time with just knowing about it. Today and then trying to make a decision on it. So that's kind of where, where I'm at.
Now, knowing about it. Same time, I have concerns about interest rates right now. I know they're. And, um, and then there's essentially saving fifty thousand dollars on top of that, so. Ben, what do you, what are your thoughts on the interest rates? Or see them going up sooner?
That's a, that's a great question. Uh. They have been flat. They've been flat here lately. The, uh. Before the election happened, we saw interest rates come up. We expected them to stay up. They actually dropped and then they flattened out. Typically, they'll stay flat until the spring and that's usually when the, the next movement happens, whether it's up or down. They're at historic lows now anyway. So the, I knock on wood, the only thing that can happen now is go up. I can say that last year we had interest rates below one percent. So typically in the spring, that's when you're gonna see it, you know, you're gonna climb. Uh, right now we've got clients that are just doing just what you guys are doing is, is. Finding ways to advance fund some of their projects, if not their equipment ahead of the next budget cycle. Because of those, uh, interest rates being so low, they could stay that way at the end of the year. I, I find it hard to believe. We've got a new administration coming in, uh, which could put some disturbance in the stock market. It may not. I know when, uh, the election happened, we saw a lot of stability within the stock market happen. Typically, when stock markets go up, we see interest rates go up with it. Right now they're stable though, so I, I, I wish I could tell you what they're gonna do next spring. I, I probably wouldn't be in front of you. I could. But typically we've seen it in the spring is when those rates start moving.
I guess my thought on it, guys, is, you know, I mean, yeah, Julie, I wish we could have, you know. Passed this around to the multiple committees before we tried getting it from the council meet or the finance committee. As soon as we possibly could so that we could try to find the budget and see if it's even a feasible product for us. But I, I go back to kind of when we, you know, talked about, uh, in the last council, the, um, the mobile home parks. You know, if, heaven forbid, we had a major fire and we sent out our fire trucks and one of them broke down on the way there. I mean, nothing can account for that, so, um, that's, that's kind of my thoughts is, you know, I'm, I'm listening to what Ben has to say. I'm listening to what Chief Baker has to say. Know what Glenn has to say. I'm inclined to, you, um, go with the experts that have taken a hard look at this over the last, you know, week and. Really dived into everything and if, if they're all recommending to me that we go ahead and move forward with the purchase.
Mayor, if I might, there's one other thing that I forgot to mention. Uh, one of the other things that adds to this, uh, I guess makes this time, timing a little. Uh, weird is this is really the only time you guys have right now to go out into the market with a general obligation bond that you're already doing. So if, if we don't put it in this bond issue, then you're gonna lease it. More than likely do with some type of lease purchase like we've done in the other trucks. And I can guarantee you those rates are not at one and a half percent. They are in the, they're definitely in at least a hundred basis points over that. So we're at the anywhere from two twenty five to three percent then at that point and that's over a ten year period. So as far as timing is concerned, I think that's another reason that we're coming to you now is because of the timing of that bond issue.
So is it single, single event per year for gen, for GO bonds or when, when would the next opportunity be?
You could go out again. I mean, you could go out again for a bond issue. I, uh, it'd be at six hundred thousand or half million, whatever it would be. It's still, it'd be highly inefficient just because you're paying cost of issuance on that.
It's just the combining with the, the refinance and the.
Right, you're already paying the cost of issuance, so it's not much just to tuck that bond issue, that number in there and run with it.
Uh, we've always been told that if you're gonna bond anything and it's under a million dollars, it won't. Pay you back kind of, you know.
Right.
premise, I guess, of refinancing a home. Move in a year might not be the best time to refinance, so.
Okay, well, that's good info. I, I just wanna, I guess, echo, um, you know, Julie sentiments a little bit. You know, this has been on the table for quite a while and, you know, if there was this timing issue coming up. I guess I'm struggling to see why this couldn't have been, you know, on the agenda in this summer. With a plan that, hey, we're gonna probably need to go do this unless, of course. We hit an emergency with the current equipment and said, hey, we gotta move quicker. So I'm trying to, I'm, I'm struggling with how we got backed up into this. You know, kind of last minute decision as opposed to maybe a more thoughtful approach to spending this much money.
Glenn, I guess I'll have to pass that to you because I'm.
Yeah, the only, the only reason is, uh, we, yeah, we have been working on this for a while, but the way this normally goes like Chief Baker just talked about. You go out and get the information from the vendors and then, you know, bring it back to the city and the council and committees and whatever. Um, and, and it, it's just taking a little longer to do that. Didn't anticipate the, uh, you know, the discount or the, um. The price increased by twenty twenty one. Uh, that's really the only thing that puts it here now, uh, uh, as quick as it has. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't have brought it, you know, for a while, but it ju, it just takes a while for a vendor to, to give you that information because. All these are custom made trucks and that's what they take over a year to build, so. For them to give you an accurate quote on this and send you a contract and do all the things, that, that takes a while, so. Um, I'm not sure when, when the chief exactly started on, you know, researching this and talking with the vendors, but it has been months. So, but then they threw this, you know, fifty thousand dollar increase at us here, uh, within the last few weeks. So that's what we decided to bring it to the council now rather than wait to take advantage of that. That, that's the only urgency in all this. Otherwise, there, you know, the ninety three truck will probably continue to operate as it has. But for a while, it won't last forever because it's a ninety three truck. But it's not gonna fall apart tomorrow or anything like that. So you don't need to think that we're in imminent danger of anything. Um, so yeah, we can continue to use it. The only thing is you want to, you want to save the fifty thousand dollars, then take advantage of low interest rates right now or. Or, or, uh, you know, delayed a decision. That, that's the only thing. It's, it's being driven by money right now.
Let's go, uh, let's go back through, um, the strategic plan or at least our conversations with the department heads. I mean, is there? If this is, you know, this isn't a need, we know that the truck's old, um, it's been having some issues. Can, can we think of what's some of the other looming issues of those department heads that may be coming up that, um, let, let's prioritize right now? If, if that feels a little bit more comfortable. I'm going back to that meeting. Work session with department heads. Um, I remember the radios being a big thing. Um, so I mean, the, the question is, I mean, is it worth fifty thousand dollars to, to kick the can down the road?
Well, fifty, it's not all that. I, I would argue that it's fifty thousand dollars plus a lower payment.
That's true.
Down the road because you're, you're not gonna be able to add it into a bond payment after.
And we, we checked it, we checked a big one with the, uh, wastewater treatment plant. Um, and I think that might be a little bit, what makes it feel a little uncomfortable too, um, you know, being pushed to the last meeting of the year. Um, is that we did just have a big expense for that and so we're coming off that and here, and you know, here's another one. So I think we're wise to, to proceed cautiously. I just want to talk through it.
Yeah, so maybe it's the, you know, Glenn, or this has obviously been, you know, with a, with a truck that old, this has been on the list for some time, right? I mean, there's definitely, it was gonna be a future expense. And, you know, was it discussed as early as, you know, the last couple of years about when that might be? Um, you know, it seems like this probably fits into a strategic plan or would have if there, you know, if there was one. And if we were to develop one, of Corey's point, if we went down through it, it's, I'm guessing would bubble up near the top. Um, it's hard to push back on, you know, public safety stuff anyway, but, um, you know. Brian, Susan, was this something that you guys rationalize as a future large expense at all the past four years?
I don't, I don't, I mean, we didn't discuss this truck. We had to concentrate on the bigger truck before because of our building on Baker University. So, um, this was not a, to answer your question now.
Okay.
For the last three years.
Oh, I'm, I'm in my notes here from the, uh, department heads meeting and, uh, the, the new fire truck was the, was the big bullet point. It was the first thing mentioned by Terry. So, I mean, it's, it was, it was brought up then.
I guess I got a question for Chief and for Terry. What, what future expense do you guys might see in public safety? Uh, coming up? I mean, the radios are those, so just from my past experience. Does Douglas County share in the cost of those radios? I heard Corey speak about the radios.
The answer on our portables and our mobile units, no, those are our costs. The infrastructure. That allows us to talk to each other throughout the county is a shared expense. And the infrastructure of the towers, uh, the communication system itself is a county funded deal. But the actual radios that like I carry on my person, my officers carry on their person and the radios that exist in the cars. Those are all our expenses here in the city.
So what's our timeframe for having to replace those in the expense of that roughly?
Well, it's kind of a moving target because some of the radios that we have, the portables that need to be replaced are, uh, if they fail. Uh, right now they're functioning. If they intend, if they fail, I can't buy that same radio anymore. I have to buy the newer radio. So, um, and I'd rather not have that purchase a, I have to replace a broken one. I think we want to get out in front of that because that technology is antiquated now and we can't, we can't repair them any longer. So I think you're probably looking in the next year. Sometime in twenty twenty one, we'll probably need to pull that trigger.
There, there was a mention that going in with Udonora and the county, uh, would make it cheaper. Um, and there was also some discussion back then about. A, a county loan that we could pay back. Can you speak a little bit to that?
I'm not sure about the county loan. I can tell you that when you do purchase in bulk, you do usually get a better rate. I believe Lawrence has already purchased their radios. Uh, they've already made. So we, I can still check with, uh, um, Wes, the chief over in, uh, Udonora to see if they've done theirs yet.
Okay.
What are you expecting on that, chief?
I'm sorry, one more time.
What are you expecting for an expense that on those radios?
I can't remember exactly what that was. Glenn, do you recall? I don't have.
Yeah, I don't recall it off the top of my head. I, yeah.
Thirty seven grand.
Know what it is?
Exactly.
And, 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 and just as a reminder, I was just looking it up. I was in trouble with my laptop, but looking it up, we've got, uh, radios and the cameras in one bucket for leases in twenty twenty one.
So that's already.
So it's already in, it's already in the budget.
Okay.
So, uh, the, the cameras and the leases together is eighty four thousand. To replace the whole shooting match because they need to be done now. They couldn't wait. So you guys have already, you guys have already contemplated that already.
And they go encrypted in twenty twenty two, right?
I believe that's correct, Corey, yes. Yeah, I believe that's right.
So after this truck purchase, when are we looking at for the, potentially for the next one based on? Age of the one you, the one you already have?
The next fire truck?
Yeah.
Okay. Chief, do you have any idea when the next, uh, truck would be necessary?
It, we call it engine one, the Kenworth is an oh four. Um, but here's the good thing is we can, we buy this truck. We can keep that truck longer and always use it as a reserve truck down the road. And ti- ten more years. I mean, that truck's gonna last another ten years easy. As far as I'm concerned, it will last another ten years easy and then we can always keep it another five after that. For a, a reserve truck, if we had to try not to get it out too much, but still use it, but not as often as you would the newer trucks. Um, that truck, to be honest, I've been on the department, I think fourteen years. And, uh, that truck's been, I mean, I don't know why that truck has been the way it is, but it's a really good truck. We've not had a lot of issues with it. But I, I would say in my book, another, at least another twelve, thirteen years, maybe even longer before we'd have to think about replacing it. That's my opinion.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you. So a naive question, um, two truck minimum for a community of our size just for redundancy. What's the? What's the rationale around two trucks?
I could, to be honest, Scott, I couldn't answer you that because there, there's been three trucks in there since I've been here.
Okay.
We replaced, uh, uh, for the people that don't know, when they bought the ninety three, I wasn't chief back then, but. I was against buying the ninety three with the old chief for the fact that it was an old truck. Came out of Minnesota, you know, and we're finding now all the rust issues with the pumping system. And we're getting big chunks of rust out of the pumping system. Um, but in my opinion, I, I, I wouldn't have purchased that truck back when they did. That's, and neither would my assistant chief, Donnie. Um, but it replaced an eighty two. Then actually broke down going to a fire once and got left on the side of the high, on the side of a road, so. But we had the same issue with the ninety three. The computer went out of it, um, going to a call. The computer just quit. The truck was down for six months when we had to pull the computer out, send it to California and have it completely reprogrammed and sent back. Um, and there's, the warranty on that wasn't that great, but that's the only route we had at that time and it was really expensive to get it done. So.
Where, where do we want to go with that?
It's a tough one. I, you know, yeah, I think our, our only options in my opinion is, you know, we. You know, take the next two weeks and figure out if we need more information and, and reconvene or we make a decision tonight, uh, based on what information we have. That'd be my guidance.
Um, I'm gonna, I'll go ahead and say, I think we need to do it. Um, we have a recommendation from our finance firm. It's, it's built in with some cushion. I'm encouraged that the radio's already budgeted in there. That makes me feel a lot more comfortable. I think we ought to do it.
So is that a motion?
That's a motion. Uh, I motion, we move forward with the, uh, with the purchase of the fire truck.
I'll second.
Been moved in second. Laura, can you call the poll?
Brian?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Corey?
Hi.
Motion. Next item on the agenda is the twenty twenty one council committee appointments. So what I decided typically I'd make a new appointment and switch up the committees, but we literally just did that. Um, and I feel like we're finally feeling our grooves in our committees. Um, so my recommendation is to leave the committees as. For twenty twenty one, not saying it never change them during that time, obviously we changed them mid year. Obviously, we changed them mid-year this last year, but this time I, I prefer to leave all, all committees appointments as is. And Laura, do we need to vote on this?
Yes, you do.
So I guess, is there any discussion or any comments about that?
I'm happy with where I am.
Do the, um, do the chairs and vice chairs switch or do you just keep everything?
I'm gonna keep, since we, we just switched around a lot of chairs and vice chairs and, and I, I just, I'd rather just leave everything as it is. Because I feel like, I feel like we're on a good, we're in a good spot, right?
Yeah, I'm happy.
So you don't want to switch with me, Cory?
Well, I know I don't want to switch with Scott, that's for sure.
I'll just say, you know, personally speaking, you know, it, it's taken a year to really become effective at all. And understand, I'm sure it's the same in every committee, just understanding, you know, how things work and, you know. So once you learn, then you can apply that and maybe do some, some good things with it. So I, I appreciate having another year to, to, you know, use what we've learned in the committees to, to move forward.
Okay. Can I get a mo-, is that a motion, Scott?
I don't want to be responsible for that in the motion.
I move, we stay the same on committee appointments.
It's been moved, Laura, did you get that wording from Brian?
It was a weak motion.
I got it. Brian?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Cory?
Hi.
Next item is the twenty twenty one council meeting dates. Again, this is just an annual thing. We set our meeting date the first and third Tuesdays of the month. Um, I think they work pretty well for the most part. So I, I, my recommendation to council is to go ahead and approve the council meeting dates as the first and third Tuesday. Is there any discussion on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move, we approve the twenty twenty one council meeting date sometimes.
Second.
Been moved to second, Laura?
Brian?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Cory?
Hi.
Motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda is the moderate income housing grant. So we found out, as you guys read, um, we, we approved. The application for this grant, uh, Baldwin City was awarded uh, as part of the uh, Doug County application. However, we do need a. To. And Glenn can give it on this vote means or anything like that.
Yeah, as, as the mayor just mentioned, uh, we were part of a countywide uh, grant application, um, uh. Which is a little bit unique. Normally cities do this one by one, but we decided to do this as a county, which really meant that. Since Lawrence is not eligible because their, um, their population's too high, that came down to Udora and Baldwin City. But we were still um, under the uh, Douglas County did made the application. What made it also unique is we're working with two nonprofit organizations, that's tenants to homeowners. Uh, which work most closely here with us in um, in Baldwin City. They were the best fit for us. And Habitat Habitat for Humanity has been working with Udora. And so our, our application then combined uh, two cities, uh, two nonprofits and the county. And we thought that'd be uh, an impressive application and I, and I think it was. Of course, we're not the only cities to get funded in the state. There were, there were others that did that, but it was a total of four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, two hundred thousand dollars goes to each city and what'll happen here, um, long story short is that. We're working with tenants to homeowners and they have identified three lots they can purchase and build three new homes. Uh, on those lots and they'll probably average around a hundred and seventy seven, I think, uh, was their target for. Um, for their homes, so that'll be affordable housing. And they stay affordable housing forever once they're built. And they're also looking at purchasing uh, two existing homes to get people in more right away in about that same area there. So you get five homes here that will remain, um, uh, as they are, as, as affordable housing really permanently. In, in uh, in our community and really the same things happen over in Udora, they're just doing it with a different nonprofit. So a lot of moving parts of this, we, we made it a little more complicated than it usually is, but the whole point was to um. Make available to our community that affordable uh, housing, which has been a big need in Baldwin City for. Years, if not decades. And I know it's five homes, but it's five more homes than, you know, we had yesterday, I guess. So uh, you know, one by one, inch by inch, we make these uh, these things happen. So I appreciated the effort that the, the county put in this, uh, they did a lot of heavy lifting and worked really help, really well with it. Kansas Housing Resources Commission and um, and also the, the nonprofits in Udora. We all worked throughout the summer uh, to make this happen and had our fingers crossed. And for the end of the year, we did get the announcement here last week, so uh, hats off to everybody around. So any questions about that?
I think the only comment I, I have is I, I hope that they build these houses that they use our local business.
Uh, yeah, I mean, the, the announcement they made, I think they were trying to assure the, the public that these will be quality built. So that they have um, people that they're, they trust and they work with, but we can talk to them about using local contractors and subcontractors. Like we have really all the uh, projects we've done, whether it's Sullivan Square or sidewalks or any other building projects. We, we've had a local preference for all of those, so uh, I think they were trying to tell people that look, these will be quality homes. There's no reason you wouldn't want one of these in your neighborhood because they're not going to stand out as, you know, um, you know, a substandard home. When people think about affordable housing, they don't think the housing will be good, but these will be, those can be really quality products that are built. So there, it basically comes down to we're, we're subsidizing affordable housing here through, through this program.
Any other questions, comments?
Uh, this is great. This is um, you know, we've been having these uh, affordable housing conversations recently at the uh, budget level. Um, kind of just, you know, talking about where to start and I, I was encouraged to, to definitely see that come through and I, I'd like to see more of it. For every, for every house that gets built and uh, someone moves into that, that leaves the, the house previous open as well, so.
Right.
Awesome.
So Glenn, what do they need to vote on? I guess, what are they?
Accepting, there's, there's a contract in front of you to move forward with this. So we, we would, we would sign the contract and send that back to the housing resources and then notify uh, the county. And the two nonprofits were ready to go and start the process, so uh, they'll, they'll start moving forward their process then.
Okay. With that, do I have a? Motion to accept the contract or approve the contract?
I move, we approve the contract, county.
I'll second it.
Scott.
Got, got one in there.
Okay. Susan was going in slow motion. Okay, Brian?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Cory?
Hi.
Motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda is Kansas beats the virus grant. So I, myself and Scott, um, uh, were involved in one of the conversations. I, I guess there was multiple conversations on Friday morning and one of the ideas that came out of that, those conversations was. Um, to create an outdoor space where people could go to during COVID. Um, and part of that was to apply for this three thousand dollar grant and buy, I think fifteen hundred dollars worth of outdoors heater. Um, and a thousand dollars worth of outdoor tables and chairs and then five hundred dollars of extra propane for these. Part of it would be that the city would need to be applicant on this, on this. Uh, the city would then own the heaters, we'd also have to store the heater. So I, I expect, uh, you know, I ha- I still have questions. I think Scott still asked questions. Uh, especially with, with the council and the city to just get a feel for where everybody's at. But that is what this agenda, agenda items for. Scott, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I mean, it was really just a brainstorming session. I know Laura was on one of the, there was four or five sessions with the Kansas Leadership Center. Around this beat the virus grant that they're offering really to any city in Kansas that they can come up with programs that, you know. Uh, meet the requirements and in our, our targeted at, how do we, you know, control and end up beating this virus, you know? And it was really brainstorming session and kind of morphed into, you know, maybe the top ideas. And so I know out of our group came the one uh, to leverage, you know, Sullivan Square and some outdoor. A meeting space through the winter, which provides challenges, but uh, so the idea came up around, you know, those uh, freestanding heaters. That are propane, you know, driven, um, tables and chairs and have any, you know, so, so, you know, it was an hour long meeting, so that's about as far as we got. But uh, Grant, I think due is on the twenty, uh, grant submission is due the twenty first. So we're trying to get that three thousand dollars. I think the programming piece of how this would work for this idea is not fully fleshed out. But I think the idea of having an outdoor meeting space that, you know, that lined up with uh, you know, CDC. Your recommendations for, you know, mask wearing, social distancing, all that, uh, was part of what we were trying to do, so. That's where we're at.
And just in full transparency, it get a request as part of it to have um, the city match three thousand dollars to. To provide extra programming or extra amenities in there. And I felt like that was a little too rushed for not knowing exactly what Scott spoke to. Not knowing exactly what, how the programs are going to work with these. Um, and so I said, we'll just, we'll, we'll talk about the grant application tonight. And then we can revisit the, the three thousand dollars matching of the city as the program works through the, the programming side of, of the things. So I guess, is there questions, concerns, comments?
I love this idea. Um, not only can it help serve during the pandemic, but in the future. So if you can imagine next year, Christmas time, those heaters being in that space. And hopefully we're at a place where we can gather more than just in small groups. So I think this is a great idea. Um, I love the fact that it's quick, it can start in January. Um, and I trust that there'll be great program, programming for it, so I support this.
I think the only other thing to take into consideration and Scott, I think we, correct me if I'm wrong, we kind of talked about this. Just because I want to make, you know, full transparency to the council is, you know, this is, this is going to um, put more staff time into something. Um, you know, and I think that's something that still needs to be discussed with the group and the committee on. Who takes down the heaters, who sets them up, who, who replaces propane, um, all that fun stuff. Just, just in full transparency and probably to get Glenn's, Glenn's points or thoughts on there. Because I know our city app is already spread thin and um, you know, I just, I, I want to make sure we discuss everything. As much as what we discuss in that committee, since it does involve the city staff.
Oh, I, I, I appreciate that and unfortunately I wasn't able to um, attend that, that webinar Friday was um. Now, I had too many other things actually going on, so I, I didn't go to either one of those that were available there. So I'm, I'm running a little bit behind on this. Um, but yeah, as far as scheduling, whatever, as far, as, as long as we know something's coming. Um, you know, our guys are very good about scheduling things and so it's just another thing that sort of add to, to our list of things that you would have to do. So um, yeah, we, we can, we can handle um, something like this coming along. As far as storing the heaters or whatever, there's a couple of options for that, so we, we can figure that out too. That, so none of us can be a, a huge burden, I don't think, you know, on our staff, just, just a great addition to our city if we can make this work.
Glenn, I, one question I still had was, so let's say hypothetically, worst case scenario. Somebody knocks over one of these heaters and it does damage or whatever, I mean. City's insurance going to cover that? I mean, how, how does that all work?
Yeah, if it occurs on city property, it does. You know, all of our property is covered under what we call an umbrella. Um, insurance policy, um, that's what EMC offers every city, so that, and that's why you have that kind of liability insurance. So whether it's a park or any other city property and, and so you don't ever have to do any special, you know, what, whatever for uh, city property. It's always covered uh, under our city property. That's just the way our policy always reads. So yeah, if there were some accident or somebody that actually, God forbid, got hurt because one of these things, again, it's still covered under our city policy. Uh, so we won't have to take out anything extra, if that's, if that's what you're looking at.
Okay.
Uh, Casey, you may want to talk about, you know, I don't know if the final decision's been made around, you know, three thousand dollars on heaters. Or there's a mix of tables and chairs, you know, and just kind of, there's opportunities to do different things.
I think that, I think this application was fifteen hundred dollars for, a thousand dollars for tables and chair. And five propane tanks.
Yep, alright, perfect.
And all of that would be purchased locally, from my understanding, so that's a hundred thousand dollars back in the community.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, like I said, I was part of the group, I liked the idea, anytime we get out, I'd especially during the winter months, be warm. I just wanted to mention all this again as talking points, I guess, were brought up in the committee. But I also want them brought up to the county.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, I do think there'll be opportunities for the city to participate further financially, just beyond the, the hours. That are going to be put in, you know, ma- managing the equipment, you know, with particular programming, there might be opportunities for. You know, funding food trucks or local restaurants to do things. It's certainly not off the table and there's going to be plenty of opportunity to do that. Down the road, based on, or based on the programming.
Correct, yep. Any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, we, are we accepting the application or we will accept the grant if it's awarded?
I think approving the grant application.
I move, we approve the grant application.
Second.
Been moved to seconded, Laura?
Brian?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Cory?
Hi.
Motion passes. Next item is council committee reports budget.
Yep, so we had three, three separate items that we discussed since last meeting, the debt and bonding ordinance. We've already discussed in the session and the fire truck purchase also discussed today. So the only other thing that we talked about in the committee is really the wastewater utility improvement reserve fund get well plan. You know, it was really discussion on how do we, you know, based on the last emergency expenditure we had around the uh. Um, the controllers for the wastewater plant, you know, put us in a negative, we're borrowing from the uh, electric fund. We're going to pay that back, so discussion around how we would actually do that. Um, you know, different ideas were tossed around as far as stopping transfers like we've done in the past, et cetera. So I don't think that's fully fleshed out, but we did recognize that we need to go put a plan in place to get that. To where it's functional and workable position for twenty twenty one. Led to a bigger discussion around just the whole, and the whole scrubbing of the utilities. And making sure that, you know, we're going to be healthy, our rate structure is correct. Um, I think we start with this, you know, wastewater effort. Um, and that's going to be a process. I think we all decided that's going to, you know, it's going to take a year, just with everything else on the plate, the meeting schedule. So uh, the committee um, thought it would be, and I, you know, good idea to bring to the council and suggest that. You know, we put this kind of as a, as a goal for the, the council to um. You know, as part of the strategic planning, as part of everything we're doing, have a utility um, plan in place. That would include potential rate, you know, changes as required to, to, to me, meet what we expect to happen in these utilities. And a strategic plan. So just from a very high level, that's, you know, what we discussed, that's what we'd like to go do. It's going to require work sessions by the full council. I mean, it's complex, it's controversial. So I think everybody's going to have to commit to some extra cycles to, to figure this out, even with a, uh, you know, a. So I think everybody's going to have to commit to some extra cycles to to figure this out, even with the uh, you know, a. Self imposed deadline and having it done before December twenty twenty one. So anybody else in the committee want to add to that?
I think that was, I think that was a good synopsis of of that discussion and I will just a little bit. So our plan is in January and February and maybe March hit the strategic plan pretty hard. But after that, the finance committee really goes into hard, hard line budgeting at that point. Um for the budget cycle. So that was kind of the reason for the the year long just. You know, it'll be wrapped in the strategic plan. It's going to be wrapped in the budget discussion. But then I I wanted some work session just on this topic before we brought it to the full council agenda. So. Just to kind of give some, a little bit more clarification.
And that's all I had. Was Corey wants to add anything?
No, he summed it up well.
Next meeting Friday morning at seven forty five. This Friday.
Community development, Corey.
Uh yeah, so um CDC has not met since our last meeting. Um however, we did um have an advisory group meeting on Thursday. Um at the time the committee met. Um the poll that went out was still open and we'd already received several comments. Um up to that point, they were still kind of coming in. Um so the committee expressed a desire to uh pause things for a moment. In order to have the time to take in um the many comments that we were receiving in order to determine how to move forward. You know, the citizens on the committee um have put an incredible amount of effort into being open and transparent during this process and. Um wanted to make sure every bit of value feedback. Received was considered. So um so we kind of hit the pause button on that. Susan, do you have anything else you wanted to add on that?
No, I think you covered it. Yeah, they're just um wanting to be very thorough and and take into consideration. Um the results of that last survey um before.
Yeah, yeah, and they they put a ton of work in it. And I think every every time we meet, um they they always, you know, uh want to hammer back the citizens, you know, obviously. Uh who are on the ground kind of um doing the community outreach portion of this. They they really want to hammer in that transparency portion and. Um didn't want to let any comments slip by. So um that's what we're doing now. The poll uh the poll closed on Sunday, I believe. And so um at the next meeting on Thursday, and I know um Lynn and uh everybody's going to be looking at that a little bit closer. Other than that, um we have the uh Main Street application coming up uh in January. And um we are getting together to discuss that um deadline tomorrow. So uh we'll hopefully I'm not, hopefully have an update on that at the next January meeting.
And your your next meeting's when, Corey?
Uh next CDC meeting, Susan. I don't have it pulled up.
I don't have it in front of me.
I have slow internet.
Isn't it the twenty eighth?
Okay, let's go back and revisit.
I believe it's the twenty eighth.
It is the twenty eighth. It's a, it's a four o'clock.
Yeah.
Thanks, Corey. Public safety, Susan.
Um, I know I did. Our next meeting is Monday at four.
Thank you. Public Works and Utilities, Julie.
Uh we haven't met since the last council meeting. Um so I don't really have anything to report. Our next meeting is Thursday. Uh the seventeenth at City Hall.
Legislative, Brian.
We were set to meet tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, but I need to check with you, Scott, and see if you're available next Wednesday at eight. That way more people can join us that are unable to right now. Sorry to put you on the spot.
That works.
So next Wednesday, the twenty third at eight o'clock. And Wendy Conover is going to join us from the library to talk about. The library district options and the new information that she has found out. And then we will also plan our work session for economic development. So I will be sending out to the group some information on that. That's it.
City staff comments, Glenn, you got anything?
Uh just, just a couple of things here. Uh one, I want to thank everybody for. Uh all the people who participated in the Christmas parade this year was put together on short notice and we did it differently this year. The Grinch led a rolling parade throughout the entire uh community. Uh and of course, we had. Fire and police. Um we're the only ones participating in that. So. Uh chief, how long were you out there freezing in your Grinch outfit? Was that two hours?
I rode in the bucket of the platform for two and a half hours during the parade.
Two and a half hours. All right. Have you uh thought out yet?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, lots of chocolate.
It was worth every bit of it.
Or something else. Yes, all right. Well, you're worth every bit of it is right. So uh that and uh we did. We did close the survey on the Bauer Building this Sunday. Uh Lynn is uh is analyzing and tabulating those results. And we'll we'll have those here for the next Bauer Building Committee meeting coming up and we'll be able to discuss those. I think we had over three hundred. Um people have participated in that and we did that throughout the city. We also included people in the school district. We got some of their contact information. So a lot of them did participate as well. That's a, that's a pretty good. A pretty good sample size for a city of this size and, you know, we'll we'll share those results here coming up. So. That and we did have a financial report here that uh Dana did provide. So if there are any questions on that. Uh we'll try to answer those. If nothing else, though, that that's all I got for the last meeting in twenty twenty. And I'm hoping that twenty twenty one turns out to be better than twenty twenty in many different ways.
Is, can Lynn talk or is?
I believe she, I believe she's down there as Baldwin City. If that's you down there, Lynn. No, she's over here to the right.
If we can re, I know we weren't on Facebook, but re- announce the winners during this time for the lighting contests.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I can't hear you.
Oh, well, we can hear you. We can hear you. No. Can even hear you wrestling papers.
Lynn, hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Can you announce the winners of the lighting contest?
Sure. Um. Thanks to Corey for um doing that with his family also. So um I think we had around thirteen residential contest entries. Um, does that sound about right, Corey?
Uh yeah, there were uh nine plus. Yeah, there were thirteen.
Okay. Um, third place went to Jennifer Snitz with the theme of happy holidays. Um and she received a hundred dollars from the ground guys of Olathe and she'll get a fifty dollar utility credit. Um, second place went to Charles Jones with the theme of Christmas on every side. The prize was a hundred and fifty cash from the grounds guys and a seventy five dollar utility credit. And then first place went to Steve Lyons with the theme classic Christmas. Um, there's two hundred and fifty dollars cash and a hundred dollar utility credit on that one. Um, all of that will be announced on social media and our website and I'll be reaching out for the winners to um. Make sure that they get their prizes. Um, and then I think Mandy said the business contest winners earlier, but she is no longer on the call. So. Would you like? Okay.
Would you like for me? All right. Uh third, third place went to Baldwin State Bank. Second place went to the Dance Academy Studio and first place went to Baldwin City Library.
All right. Great job by all.
Any council comment?
Um, I was curious about if we had any money left that went to the businesses.
The the business competition was sponsored by the Chamber and they did have cash prizes. I can't remember those amounts off the top of my head.
I'm curious about the care, the cares money that we received to give to the businesses.
Where do you, you remember how much we have actually right now in our?
Uh my, I'm going to take a stab at this, like sixty two thousand.
Okay. So we've gone through.
Um, I have not.
Yeah.
We've gone through and it may be, it may be less than that, guys. I'm not in my office to look.
Well, the last I heard it was fifty four thousand.
Right.
That's, that's exactly where it's at. Yes.
Okay, so is that? Go ahead. Is that money that we have to get rid of by the end of the year?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep.
So do we have applicants for that?
No, we do not. And it's not from the locker trying. So.
Okay. Just curious.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to seconded Laura.
Brian.
Hi.
Susan. Scott.
Hi.
Julie.
Hi.
Corey.
Hi.
Motion passes. We adjourn. Thank you all.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.